Good evening, welcome to the Franklin Township Board of Education regular meeting. Today is Thursday, March 17th, 2022. Mr. Toth, can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Tsai.
Here.
Mr. Grippo.
Here.
Dr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Maris.
Here.
Mr. Shabon.
Here.
Ms. Singh.
Here.
Dr. Singh.
There is one party in the conference. Conference will begin when you confirm by pressing star three.
Is that Lori?
Dr. Smith.
Here.
President LaCour.
Here.
You have a call.
Is that, is that Lori Maris on the phone, Johnny?
Uh, it's me.
Okay, thank you. John, can you read the Open Publics Meeting Act, please?
Okay. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law, 1975, C. 231 Sunshine Law, copies of the public meeting notice were sent to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, the Star-Ledger, the Franklin Reporter, Tappan and Franklin Township, Franklin Township Clerk Manager, District Schools, Offices and Associations, PTO Presidents, and posted on the district website.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn to confidential session, please?
So moved.
Moved by Arteman, seconded by Nashida. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are turning to confidential session to discuss contract negotiations. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Good evening and welcome back to the Franklin Township Board of Education regular meeting. Today is Thursday, March 17th, St. Patrick's Day. We just came back from a confidential session to discuss confidential matters, including contract negotiations. Minutes from the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Walter, would you read the mission statement, please?
Franklin Township Public School embraces diversity, fosters excellent educational innovation, and empowers all students to achieve their highest potential.
Thank you. Sammy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion to adopt the agenda made by Bill, seconded by Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, can I get a motion to amend exhibit, the exhibit attached to A12 to reflect the end of the universal masking of 321?
So moved.
Moved by Arteman, seconded by, again, who? Nashida, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And now we are on to our presentation of the 23 preliminary budget by Dr. Valley and Mr. Toth.
Thank you, President LaCour. So, tonight, we're going to present to you the 2223 preliminary budget. What preliminary means is that it, once approved by the board, is submitted to the executive county superintendent and the executive business official, and they'll do a non-academic line review of the budget, and, once approved, then it's advertised, and then the budget hearing occurs. This year's budget hearing is April 28th. So, again, this preliminary budget, other than some non-educational lines where they may ask for minor changes or shifts, once this is approved, then it's advertised in a very similar format to this. So, here's the presentation. I'm going to run through it. After my section, I'm going to hand this over to my colleague, Mr. Toth, our school business administrator, Assistant Superintendent for Business. He'll run through the numbers end of it. Then we'll call for questions from the board. This isn't a hearing, that's on April 28th. However, if you have questions, I suggest you write them down or jot them down, and then what would happen is, you would come ask those questions at the microphone during the public comment period of the regular agenda. And it's an agenda item, so you don't have to wait, you can do that in the very beginning. So, here we go. 2223 preliminary budget. And I apologize if I'm a little nasally, I have a head cold. I'm COVID negative, though, so that's a good thing. But if you need anything repeated, just let me know. There are Board of Education members. Those with an asterisk are the members of the Finance Committee. Tonight's goals: review the budget calendar, review previously approved budget goals, review Board of Education input and get public comment during the public comment period, review estimated revenues, which my colleague, Mr. Toth, will do, and appropriations, and then review next steps, which we'll do at the very end, and he'll probably wrap up with that. The budget calendar, you can see the budget process starts very early. We start as early as September with the Board approving budget goals. This is a large district, or a larger district, and as a larger district, we have many budget managers. We have a supervisor of English Language Arts for secondary grade levels, for elementary grade levels, and those are the folks that are ordering the supplies and district-wide for those subjects. They're the ones creating the budget with the help of their teachers and their principals and the administrators at the schools. And then what occurs is, and they get sent on their way to do that, right after the Board approves budget goals, to give us some guidance on what they'd like to see our budget managers stick to. And he has a kickoff meeting and reviews the goals with the budget managers, and then moves forward from there. Principals submit capital budget project requests. Those are things like, you know, I need a sidewalk fix, you know, I need a ceiling. These kinds of things are called capital projects. They're maintenance-related type projects to the Buildings and Ground Supervisor and Assistant BA of HR, who also deals with maintenance. All of our budget managers submit their personnel staffing budget requests to the Assistant BA, HR Manager, and professional development requests to Dr. Logren, our Assistant Superintendent in the Curriculum Office. Then we go to work, and our budget managers submit their budget as early as the fall. This year, it was in November. Then we move on, and we start to bring all of those budgets together. All those smaller budgets become one larger budget, and try and stay within our appropriation limits. Then the governor, and this is a big one, the governor on this year, March 8th, provides us with his state budget address and talks about what might be in the state budget. Forty-eight hours after that, he's obligated to release the rest of the numbers to us, such as state aid figures, for us charter school tuition numbers, and anything else relative to the budget that is revenue-driven. And that all comes 48 hours after his address, which this year, because he's a first term, not new governor, but first-term governor, he was able to delay his address by two weeks, which shortened our timeline to balance the budget after the final notification of state aid, charter school projected tuition amounts, so forth and so on. Then, we're here to, and of course, we work with the Finance Committee all along with the process, and then we're here with the full Board to share with them what we came up with, show them a balanced preliminary budget, in hopes to have that approved, so we can submit it in time to advertise it for the public hearing on April 28th. And that's the calendar. I wanted to give everyone at least an understanding of that calendar, because the process really starts way back in September, and remember, this is next school year's budget. I'm not going to read these, because you're going to see them again shortly, but these are the eight budget goals that our Board came up with back on September 23rd, asking us to stay and make sure we address these things when we bring all those little budgets together to make one big budget. They asked us to address these things, these eight goals. And again, you're going to see them again, because I'm going to show you how we address them in this budget. What was the real challenges this year? And there's always challenges, right? Meeting the Board goals while supporting and growing programs, while staying within revenue limits. Revenue limits are very real, and you can only appropriate from the amount of revenue you have. Given increases in transportation costs that are roughly $870,000, so actually almost $871,000, increases in healthcare costs that are estimated to be over $2.5 million, increases in charter school tuition that's estimated to be slightly over $1.1 million, and a reduction in state aid, which, the reduction in state aid, although not a large number, obviously affects the revenue side of the budget, which, along with those expenses, growing expenses, affect the revenue side as well. And remember, in New Jersey, we have a 2% limit on tax levy, so when you look at a 2% limit on tax levy, which is roughly around $3 million here, a little bit less, and you add these up, they far exceed what our budget was able to grow. So what does that mean? We've got to find ways to offset those expenses that we might have, that we want to maintain, in order to balance the budget. That's the challenge. So, here was goal number one. So, goal number one really was ensuring physical and mental well-being of students. We all know the pandemic has affected our students, it's affected our adults, it's affected everybody, and we know that there are challenges to coming back to school, and we've been experiencing some of those challenges. So, within our budget, we've budgeted four things and have identified things that we believe will be helpful in addressing the physical and mental well-being and safety of our students, as was directed by the Board. So, in the budget, we have a sum of money dedicated to this panorama social-emotional learning software that we acquired for this school year, and we want to maintain for yet another year. And what that piece of software does is, through working with kids, it helps us to target very specific needs that our kids are coming to school with from a social-emotional learning standpoint. We have the hiring of an elementary school counselor-supervisor right now. We have a rather large counseling staff. We have, and you'll see later on, we have a grant to include not additional counselors, but additional vendors that deal with counseling. And we don't have anyone managing that program. I mean, we have K-12 counselors, but that's a big lift. And with that said, in order, whoops, in order to speak to the physical and mental well-being of our students, we're looking at an elementary school counselor for next year, and the budget supports that. Increase security officers, that seems like a relatively low number, and it is. And the reason that is, is because it's really a shifting in funds, taking a couple of part-time folks, making them full-time. So, it's the equivalent of one full-time officer, but we get two more bodies, which we anticipate will be at the high school for next year. Actually, it's already there for this year. We're going to carry it into next year. We're upgrading GoGuardian. You know, through the pandemic, we have increased the amount of technology we have in the district, and GoGuardian helps us to manage that technology, and it also helps to safeguard our kids. And so, with GoGuardian upgrade, we're going to be able to better manage the software and encompass all the computers that we have out there. And we have three schools left that need surveillance cameras and surveillance upgrades. That's the EAS Elizabeth Avenue School, the Franklin Park School, and the PGM School. We want to get them on the same system as the rest of the district. We've been chipping away at this, and so there's money included in the budget in order to do that. And that helps us to reach that goal. In addition, we also have SER III, you've heard a lot about that, ARP funds, American Rescue Program funds. So, we have about $800,000 allocated to this particular goal out of our SER III funds, and that is to continue our partnership with Rutgers Behavioral Health, to provide a mental health clinician and family resource coordinator for our district. We have the idea to continue our Franklin High School Positive Impact Mentoring Program, called Operation Grade Expectations. We rolled that out this year. We've allocated funds to provide workshops for staff and parents for mental health literacy, recognizing the early warning signs and strategies at home, provide more intensive training to counselors and CST members, provide training and technical assistance to our teachers, they're on the front lines, and continue to provide professional development in SEL, what we commonly refer to as SEL or social-emotional learning, and culturally responsive and linguistic practices, thus improving our relationship between, or improving the relationship between the teacher and the student. All encompassed under that first goal, separate revenue, so this is an operating revenue, this is revenue that comes from ARP, which is, quite frankly, what helped us to meet the challenge of balancing the budget in such a difficult year, the rescue funds. Meeting goal two, support programming to help accelerate learning and overcome pandemic-related learning challenges. Some unique programs here. We've got elementary tutorials, we've got summer tutorials planned, Saturday Academies planned, and we're actually doing some of that now, and gearing up for the summer as we speak, and we're going to continue with the Saturday Academies and the elementary tutorials next year. We've got middle and high school summer transition academy. I know that looks like an odd number, but that really pays for the staffing of the program, the supplies of the program. We've never had a grade nine transition program. This is our first, I shouldn't say never, in the last however many years I've been here, we've not had a grade nine transition program. So, this is at least in the last six or seven years. This is our first toe in the water, if you will, at a grade nine summer academy designed for ninth graders. And it will be a selected few, won't be all 450 or 500, or it'll be a selected few of maybe 150, and it will be designed around academic need. It'll be core subjects, it'll be physical ed and team-building activities, and there'll be a social-emotional learning component, which yet is to be identified. Then during the year, we're going to continue and host high school English and math tutorials. We're going to purchase some supplemental software to support our math programs, English software, excuse me, to support our English programs, and world language software, and our new world language supervisor's here, so he's probably excited about that, to support our world language programs. So, lots of good stuff there, you know, incorporated in this budget. A lot of these funds, too, come from ARP, SER funding. But then, there's a separate grant that we applied for. Thank you, Dr. Logren, thank you, Ms. Washington, and your team of folks, a separate grant that we applied for and were awarded, and that is the Accelerated Learning Coaching and Educator Support Grant. And that's a separate $680,345, and that was awarded to us to do these things that you see here. Work with our staff to teach and, to teach and be prepared to do things that foster social and emotional well-being of students, improve equitable access to grade-level content, prioritize depth of instruction rather than pace, implement an accelerated learning cycle to address gaps, very important, very important, because this is how we make up ground that may have been lost during the pandemic. And facilitating other professional learning that will empower educators to meet the needs of their students that are all wrapped up in the extra grant, Accelerated Learning Coaching and Educator Support. Programs, support the expansion of our programs, and these are more specialized programs. We applied and received a pre-K grant to expand our three-year-old program. I put 70-plus because there'll be a partnership with Head Start. If we partner with Head Start, there is some savings, so I put 70-plus because I don't know how many children they're going to be able to service, but our goal is to have more than 70 general education three-year-olds, and they'll be serviced both in our school and in our area pre-Ks that we partner with. A television production program at the middle school. You know, we have a bona fide CTE program at the high school that's in television production. This will be a feeder program for that CTE program, and it will be a desperately needed addition to our programming at the middle school, because we do need elective courses to give kids more choice at the middle school level. So, this is a great opportunity to do that. In here, because we are getting more into CTE programming, we have the need for a structured learning experienced coordinator that's more like a teacher, but it's somebody who goes out, creates those partnerships with area businesses, supervises not every minute of the day, but supervises the kids who take opportunity in those structured learning experiences, creates new partnerships for additional structured learning experiences, and will be working with us to launch this program at the high school. And that's a partnership with RVCC to launch what's called an Advanced Manufacturing Certificate Program, and our kids, 50, will be selected, and very similar to our Health Professions Academy that we supported a couple of years ago and continue to support in our school today. These folks will visit RVCC, the manufacturing building on that campus, and they'll take manufacturing-specific courses there, earn NIMS certificate or NIMS credentials, which are, is an acronym for something in the manufacturing world that makes you employable in different areas, and then will come back to our high school to take coursework, math, science, English, those types of courses. As our world language program grows, we are budgeting for the start of a world language supervisor within the district. You know, we've struggled with our world language program as we've made it more robust, and this will help us to get that back on course. Our vision was a consistent K through 12 program, and, you know, obviously, there's challenges in doing that and managing that when you have a lot of different folks managing it. So, we believe this is going to bring more stability to that program and help us to take it to new heights, so we're excited about that. And our middle school has also partnered with RVCC for a summer program called College Readiness Now. So, our students will be going to RVCC, working with RVCC staff over the summer, and be participating in seminar-type courses about college readiness. Our next budget goal deals with staff development. Quite honestly, that first bullet is most of Dr. Logren's budget for summer curriculum writing and district PD, equity training and coaching, membership in a New Jersey network of schools, which is a network of schools that are dedicated to bringing equity within their programs, similar to a Middle States, if you're familiar with that, and a partnership with equal opportunity schools that we started several years ago, and we would like to continue. They were the ones that helped us to realize we had some work to do when it came to better connecting with our kids, especially in the more rigorous courses. So, that's all included and supported by the budget. Also supported by the budget in the area of expanding relationships with the community at large, we have an enhanced communication platform and mobile app. You know, we're working on a new website. Ms. Clark has been working on that, thanks to the PTOs who have been giving her input, the Board who has been giving her input, she has a committee who's been giving her input. We're trying to do a better job with our website, and not only that, we would like to have an enhanced communication platform that's more interactive and also has a mobile app to it. So, that's all part of the necessary expenses related to that. You know, we've launched the program a couple of years back. We want to continue that, and that's our district video production program. We call it Focus on Franklin. Mr. Pennix, who runs the CTE course at the high school, by the way, he actually leads the charge there with Mrs. Clark, and we highlight a lot of the wonderful things that our kids are doing throughout the year. We have translation services throughout the district. Of course, we have other folks that provide translation, but there are times where we can't get folks or we need more, and we have a service that handles that, as do many districts. And then we have the Township Newsletter that we're bringing back, and actually, I think there's going to be an addition coming out soon, and it was on halt for a while during the pandemic, but now coming back. So, that's all included in the budget as well. Also, to support sustainable and green initiatives and decrease energy consumption and promote the health of our school environment, we have HVAC filtration upgrades. We did the high school last year, the common areas where lots of folks gather, we put a different kind of filtration system in place. It's called containment filtration. It gives you a higher than what is commonly referred to as a MERV-13 filtration system, which, you know, is not quite a HEPA, but somewhere in between. And we did all the rooftops in common areas at the high school. This will allow us to begin that process at the middle school over the summer. And then this other one is a pretty unique opportunity, and this may grow, and this is not something that we're paying for, but I wanted to highlight it because it's a unique strategy. Remember, I told you, right? Appropriations are our expenses, and revenues, those are those things that, you know, help to drive those appropriations, and we lost revenue this year. So, we had to find creative ways to still do things, and here's, again, another one of those creative ways. There's a PSENG grant out there that allows you to upgrade your lighting and do some mechanical upgrades to older units, meaning replace older units with new units. And we are going to do that, and we're going to pay for that through a PSENG rebate program, and the balance will be paid through the estimated savings on the bills. So, that's exciting. There's a few schools involved in that, and I should have listed them, I apologize, but I think it's, Jonathan? PGM?
PGM, Oakras, McAfee, the building that we're in, Connerly, I believe, J.
And they're looking at FPS?
I believe they are.
Franklin Park School, and they're going to look at the annex, too. They haven't yet done that, so that's not included in that number. But again, as the asterisk points, that will be all paid through savings, and again, you have to get creative when you're losing revenue in order to still make ends meet. And then, to summarize, and I always like to pull this out, you already saw this, but, you know, in one line, these are the personnel changes, because you know personnel is a large part of the budget, of course. It drives most of the budget, to be honest with you. And here is the personnel changes proposed in this budget, way down from sometimes what is typical, but necessary, and I've already talked about most of these, except the bilingual teacher. The bilingual teacher is a teacher that we hired after we started the school year, because in kindergarten, you can only have so many students, and then you're capped, and then you have to hire another teacher. Any grade level beyond that, that's not the case. So, we were pretty close and/or if not there, in one of our bilingual sections at PGM, which necessitated the hiring of the additional teacher. However, we think it's the right thing to do to continue that into first grade, even though it's not mandated, because, you know, it's a bilingual homeroom. So, we like to keep those numbers down to begin with. So, that teacher will now, and forgive the expression, but it's one we use a lot, it's called bubble class, that teacher will now follow that bubble class. So, she or he will move from kindergarten to first grade next year, or Mr. Rivera at PGM may choose to do something different, but there will be three teachers in first grade where there is typically two. And again, not necessarily mandated, but given the challenges in a bilingual class, we think it's certainly appropriate. And then, that really brings us to the fun stuff, the numbers. So, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, and then after that, we'll take questions from the Board, and then after that, we'll come back. I'll read my report, and then when we hit public session, if anybody wrote any questions down, or if you're online and you have a question, that'd be the time that you would ask that.
Thanks, Paul.
Good evening, all. My name is John Toth. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Business. Thank you for coming out tonight. I'm going to take you through the revenue and appropriations, basically the financials of the budget. We heard a lot about budget goals, hiring some new new positions, other things, new programs. Well, this is how, this is going to be the section where we discuss how we finance it and balance the revenues with the expenditures. So Goal Seven's a favorite goal of mine. This one allows us to utilize our 2% spending growth. And this is basically the only way we can grow our budget from fiscal year to fiscal year. So however, what you'll see here is in fiscal year 22, our tax levy has been reduced by Chapter 44. It's roughly been reduced by 151,000 from last year's tax levy. And the reason why we received this reduction is because, I believe in fiscal year 20, we moved from a fully insured health plan to a self-insured plan. And during that time, the board saved, and the employees also saved money. So through that savings, we now receive a reduction in the ability to grow our budget by 151,000. So we're not able to actually tax to the, you know, the highest amount or grow to the 2%. It's actually like 1.9%. But it's roughly $2.8 million. So the total tax levy for the fiscal year 23 is just over $150 million. Mind you, this $150 million makes up about 85% of the entire school operating budget. So 85% of this budget is funded by everyone that's sitting right here in this room, and everyone that lives in this town, or works in this town, or has a business in this town. Goal Eight is we, year over year, we always anticipate the utilization of any unspent funds. For instance, in the fiscal year 2021, any money that we had that was unspent, or, you know, there were savings, we always reserved those to some of our legal reserves that we're allowed to have under the law. So capital reserve, maintenance reserve, and emergency reserve. And through those reserves, for instance, we're going to be utilizing $3.8 million for various projects in order to sustain and improve our fiscal plan and capital asset. So some of the projects we're going to be doing is a buildings and grounds office at estimated cost of 1.6 million, asbestos floor abatement and replacement work at Hillcrest and Connerly Road Schools. You heard Dr. Ravalley talk about some additional security cameras, HVAC repairs, exterior drainage and site work at the Elizabeth Avenue School Campus, refurbishment of the high school gym floor, roof replacement at the Franklin Park School Annex Building, and district-wide paving repairs. So all told, all of these capital projects cost $3.8 million. They all align with our long-range facilities plan and capital maintenance plan, and there's no tax impact to you this, next year with regards to this money, because it's coming from our reserves. So this is a budgeted revenue comparison from the general fund for the local component, the, you know, the 85% share. If you look at the top column in fiscal year 22, that's where you'll see the 148,096,382. That was the tax levy last year. So I'm going to take you back two screens. See the difference here? It's been reduced by basically 151,000. That's why we're not able to grow to the whole 2%. So you'll see the tax levy is, is 148,096 for the current fiscal year. Next year, it's going to be 150 million, just a little bit more, $2.8 million, just under 2% or 1.9. We'll be utilizing $2.4 million in fund balance, slight reduction, just under 50,000 or a 2% reduction. Our tuition for special ed, we receive students from other districts. We offer wonderful programs here. Other districts pay their tuitions to send their special ed students here to take part in those programs. But we're estimating a $75,000 tuition revenue, which is flat. Our interest reserve has also been estimated as flat. Capital, capital reserve, we're pretty much where we've normally been, about 3.6. This year, it's going to be, or I should say, next year, it's going to be $3.8 million. It's going to be an increase of about 200,000 or just about 5%. Miscellaneous income, miscellaneous income, we've increased to about 150,000 or 42%. We've realized a great deal of additional revenue through reverse bidding, a lot of old capital assets that we will dispose of, interest on our operating funds, and various things of that nature. So our total local revenue, so the 85% portion of the school budget, is $157,714,162. So that's an increase year over year of 3.1 million, and it comes to exactly 2% on the local share. So that's the 85%. Now we got to look at the other 15%. Okay, so state aid, that's the other 15% that we receive. We receive aid for equalization aid, special education aid, transportation aid, and security aid. That aid that we receive in fiscal year 22 was 15.6 million. In fiscal year 23, it's also, it's 15 million, 15.621,000. It's down about 33,000. That's in the equalization aid category. It's under a percent. Extraordinary aid for the fiscal year 22 was 1.5 million. We're anticipating an increase, the 2.1. That's through a lot of kids coming back into district that were once at a district, and then taking their programs right here. We receive additional funding for that. So it's about a $568,000 increase or 37%, 37%. Our semi-aid, this is a number that we're given by the state for the students, students that are Medicaid eligible. It's $343,000 for the upcoming year. It's a $47,000 increase or 16%. So now, our operating budget, when you put everything together, this is for general operations, it was 172 million in the fiscal year 22. For the fiscal year 23, it's going to be 175 million. It's a $3.6 million increase, just at 2%. And you can see our operating expenditures, because it's a revenue-driven budget, have to match. So a lot of challenges. Thank God for some ESSER help and, you know, a lot of diligent work by the budget managers to get this into balance. Now we're going to talk about other budgets that are part of the school budget. So we have our special revenue fund. Within that fund, you have federally funded grants and flow-through money to the non-publics, and things like Dr. Ravalley was talking about, the ARP/ESSER funds. You have also No Child Left Behind, or I believe it's called ESA now, or IDEA. So these are estimates. Many of these awards we do not receive until July, in the case of IDEA or ESA. ARP/ESSER, we know what those awards are, and we know what our non-public flow-through money is going to be. So for fiscal year 22, it was 22.5 million. It's always prudent when you're budgeting to budget less for estimates. So we're seeing about $20 million is what we're estimating now, just a slight decrease of 2.5% or, or 2.5 million or just about 11%. Again, the special revenue funds, these are all grants and entitlements, so there's no impact to the taxpayer. Total debt service, we were at $8.6 million for the fiscal year 22, and now in 23, we're down to $8,78,000. It's a decrease of 613,000 or just about 7%. And the reason for this is because your debt service is when schools borrow money, they bond. We had a referendum back in, I think it was 2015. We go out, we bond on the market to borrow money to finance projects. That's the debt service fund. But since the board refinanced those exact bonds from the referendum in 2015, we refinanced, I think it was this past fall, correct? Yes, I think it was October. We realized the savings of $613,000 this year, 7%. And over the remainder of the term of the life of these bonds, we're going to save about 2.5 million. So that's very good. So the total revenue now, when you put the entire budget together, the operating budget, the special revenue budget, the debt service, you have $205 million for the fiscal year 22, and $203 million for the fiscal year 23. So you're down just about 2 million or 1%. So, and that takes you through all the financials. Here we have some next steps. This is what we do after tonight's meeting. We present the balanced preliminary budget to the Board of Education, of which we're doing this evening. We submit board-approved fiscal year 23 preliminary budget to the Executive County Superintendent of Schools tomorrow, possibly tonight. And then we present the county-approved final fiscal year 23 budget to the Board of Education for adoption. At the public hearing, you'll see many of the same things again, with some additional slides on Thursday, April 28. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toth. Just a reminder, for those on the phone or in the audience, your opportunity to ask questions will be during the public comment, because it is an agenda item. But this is an opportunity for board members to ask questions, so I turn it over to you, Chairman, Chairwoman?
Chairperson.
Chairperson.
Bill, do you have any questions? Okay. Lori, do you have any questions?
I did not. It was very clearly explained. Thank you.
Mike, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to mention that, you know, we appreciate how much work goes into this. And so thank you, John, and John, and everybody else that, you know, put time into helping you guys.
Sammy?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd also like to say thank you. I do have a question about the insurance, because that seems to be our, our largest increase, I think 2.5 million, if I captured that right.
Yeah.
Is there anything that, I mean, what are some of the things that, that we've done? Or is there anything that we could do further to?
Yeah, so two things. The first thing is, that really is a result of an insurance the previous year. Remember, we held it flat. So 21, 2021, going into 2122, there was no increase. And that is really the result of COVID, because a lot of kinds of things that people typically do that might be insured weren't getting done. So there was a artificial flatline, if you will, probably a bad thing to say. I said it last time, flatline when you talk about health insurance, probably not a good thing to say. But there was an artificial stagnation, let's go with that, in the healthcare line. So you're seeing this as something that probably is almost a double hit. That's, that's one way that that has been explained. But with that said, right, there's got to be ways, and, and there are ways, especially since we've now moved to self-insured, there are ways to control costs. And those are one, a couple of things that we're going to ask the board to look at as we go forward, is, and actually, on the agenda tonight, you're going to see a motion where we're asking for you to allow us to do a competitive RFP, a competitive contracting process, to hire a medical group, similar to what South Brunswick recently did, and what other districts that are self-insured have done, to establish the district's own care center. And that strategy usually welcomed by the folks that are covered in the plan, and usually a cost-saving measure that not only helps you to hold flat, but in, if you do a really good job with the center, and you do a really good job encouraging folks to go there, you could actually end up reducing over time your expenses, which is unheard of usually in the medical benefit world. But that's what our colleagues, now not South Brunswick, because they haven't opened theirs yet, but our colleagues a little further south, in Bricktown, who's had one operating for a while, and Toms River, who's had one operating for many years, and in some of the other districts that are self-insured, that's what they've done, and they've reaped the benefit of that. So that's a motion on tonight to allow us to do the competitive contract, not hire somebody yet, but allow us to do the competitive contract, so we can go out there and start that process. That will help us definitely going forward. Good question.
Is part of that competitive contract also look at our current contracts, or the way that we're currently structured, to see if there's anywhere where we can perhaps save? I know we're self-insured. I know we're sort of taking a deep look, but are there any other avenues that we can see to perhaps bring some of those costs down?
That would be with our broker. But competitive contracting has nothing to do with that. Competitive contracting simply means we won't rely on price alone, right? So when we do building projects, for example, we take the lowest bidder, no choice. But there are certain things that you can competitively contract. You know, we don't want to pick the lowest priced doctors, right? We want to pick those that meet a certain criteria, and cost is certainly one of them, but it's not the only. That's what competitive contract means. It allows you, gives you flexibility with the board's permission to do more than just look at price. And there are certain things, like textbooks, another thing that you can competitively contract, correct, John? Oh, so what, give me another example.
So competitive contract, you can, you can do a competitive contract for substitute services, for like substitute teachers, or a service that would provide substitute nurses. It's not quite like a, the format is an RFP, it's just a method of procurement, very similar to the RFP process, very similar in terms of evaluating, where you have price and other factors. So usually, it's technical, managerial, and cost. But in it, and it's what it exactly is, it's a procurement method under Title 18A, 18A, which is the public schools contract law.
And that's the strategy for, number one, is to really reap the benefit of having your own medical center, like our colleagues have done. But then, of course, now that we've seen what the actuaries are telling us is our increase for next year, of course, we want to work with our broker to figure out methodology in order to get that under control as well, until we get to that point where perhaps we can benefit from the healthcare center.
Great. And I think this is the last question, but in terms of the, the broker, so I understand that aspect, in terms of the broker aspect, have we, have we done an RFP or some type of competitive process along that dimension to see that we're getting sort of the best there?
So that happens to be also on the agenda tonight. In that same line, you're going to see the board giving us the opportunity to go out for a competitive, or RFP, under the competitive contracting law, for three things. And now you got me on the spot, and I don't have the agenda in front of me, but one of them is health broker, the other is doctor's service or medical center service, and
Number three is risk manager.
And risk manager is number three, which also would play into that. So
Thank you, Sammy.
Good question. And yes, they're on there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Dennis, do you have any questions?
Well, number one, Sammy, great questions. And a lot of this stuff, myself, Mike, and Walter went through last night with the finance committee. And yeah, and I thank Dr. Ravalley for putting his part of how the transition from the eighth graders to ninth graders with the summer program that is projected to happen, so that the transition with some of the students will be pretty easy. So just to share with the public that, yeah, the finance committee itself with a lot of the things that was presented today, we, all those hard questions was asked last night. So at this time, I don't have any other questions.
And Dr. Hopkins, if I may, again, thank you to the finance committee and Chairperson, Mr. Jackson. But I also don't want to stand here and take credit for the development of a ninth grade transition program. I would if Dr. Solomon wasn't here. But since Dr. Solomon's here, I got to give credit where credit is due. And it is Nick and the two middle school principals have, who have recognized the need. And of course, Dr. Solomon was our middle school principal, or one of our middle school principals at one time. So it was our principals that recognized the need, and it's our principals that have and continue to work on putting that program together. So, you know, I thank you for acknowledging me, but I don't want any false understanding that it wasn't the good doctor's effort that has put this together.
Well, since he's out here, then, thank you, Dr. Solomon. All credit is due to you then.
Sometimes as leaders, we just get out of the way, right?
Isheeta, do you have any questions?
I want to thank you guys and the finance committee. Dr. Solomon, thank you for the excellent program. A lot went into it, and I live in this township, so I really appreciate you doing everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter, do you have any?
No, no questions, but great job all. Thank you.
Phil, do you have any questions yet? Okay.
Yeah, I was going to actually ask my colleague, Dr. Smith, to put this on his facility agenda, on sustainability efforts. The other day, Father Abraham at St. Matthias gave a report on the solar panels that he put on the church and the school. And he said that with it, he showed how much money he was making, not that the church makes a lot of money, but how much he was saving. he was making, not that the church makes a lot of money, but how much he was saving with these solar panels. And he also cut a deal with the contractor to put a new roof on the church and the school for free. This is in the bulletin. So, I'm wondering where, I know that Claremont School, when we did the referendum, we, we had the solar panels built into that. Where are we with that with all of our schools in terms of saving money with the sustainability effort? And then, the second part of my question, John, it goes to you, because I know you're doing for one of your goals, the electric buses. I'm not looking for a report now, but that's another way to build in sustainability for the district. But the solar panels, I mean, the other day, when the sun was out, I was trying to get on the golf course, and I looked up and said, look at all that free energy up there. So, where do we stand with the solar panels, John?
Well, Mr. Kripal, I got to make one comment. If you're looking up in the sky and staring at the sun while you're swinging a club, then you better get a new instructor.
You're not going to hit the ball good.
You're not going to hit the ball well. Keep your head down. But the, to answer your question, Claremont does have a system that we installed that's ours, and you're probably going to hear on a report tonight, Mr. Ellis manages that in Jonathan's department, you're probably going to hear on our report tonight, a report that he gives to the facilities committee every month about what we're saving and, more importantly, what we're earning through SRECs. Prior to all of us, you know, the district, many, many years ago, got involved in a countywide program, a PPA program, meaning they allowed folks to come and put solar panels on the roof, did save money on electricity, but, you know, structured the deal such that the county also is benefiting as well. So, we have a lot of solar panels. Could we have more? Absolutely. Is Jonathan looking at that as well? For sure. We've had discussions about maybe carports at the high school. Lots of our roofs are taken up, and by the way, you know, one thing we have learned is, yes, you can put a new roof on, but that comes out of your savings, right? Your project, so if you get into a PPA and they put a new roof on and put solar panels on, you don't make as much money or save as much money as you would. So, you know, somebody's going to pay for that, and it comes out of your projected savings. So, which is fine. If you don't have the capital to be able to put a roof on, then you're smart to do it that way, similar to what we're doing this year with the LED bulbs and the mechanical upgrades that we're doing with PSE and G. We didn't have that kind of capital around to be able to do that, so we're doing it through a program where we save money and pay for it with the savings. So, that is a viable option, but it's a better option if you can do the roofing yourself and, and, and put the solar panels on, and even if it's through a PPA, because then you don't lose that part of the savings. So, he is looking at that, too, to see where else there might be available space and what else we might be able to do with regard to solar to save money and maybe even perhaps make some money, which is what we're doing at Claremont. So, you'll hear both of those reports.
But Claremont is the only school now
That we own.
Has the
That's right. That's correct.
So, okay. I guess my point is, is that a lot, there's a lot of roof space, this building, you know, that we could really look at. I mean,
Yep. That's what we're doing.
So, okay.
That's what he's doing.
Would you please, SSP and Gable Associates, if you may, cover the analysis and all that people, where you can go next, in terms of doing it, if you can. But if your question was regarding to Claremont, you know, I'm not much for energy, and Ryan is, he's very good at it. You know, it comes to our facilities needs monthly. I think the speaker for the last night, the last payment we received, I think it was about 16,000, Mike, that time, right?
Yeah, that sounds right. I don't have the hard numbers in the report, but
Yeah, but I think I want to say it was about 16,000 in the last payment, so. That's another reason why you saw our miscellaneous revenue increasing, is that, and this has been when the months are dark. Ryan is pretty excited about his energy and purchasing, he's pretty excited about, you know, longer days, more sunlight, really see what the system's going to generate.
And the most important thing, and I'll leave you with this, is that that then allows to make up ground. When you have those bigger expenses, you're getting revenue on another side. I mean, you're capped at what you can raise taxes, and that's part of the law, and we all, you know, that is what it is, and that's fine. And, but it's the, because the cap is on the revenue side, on the tax levy only, other sources of revenue, like Jonathan's talking about, like you're mentioning, Bill, are ways in which you can meet some, you know, put, put money back in the classroom, and that's exactly what we're trying to do, not, you know, when we face tougher budgets, not cut programs, but find ways to fund programs in alternative ways. So, good question, though.
Bill, Mike did a nice job last night in going through with the facilities, with the gentleman that was presenting, and yeah, he definitely asked some tough questions to that gentleman, just to try to see how the district itself could expand and benefit from the program itself.
Do you have any other questions, Phil? Okay. Arteman.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, John, Dr. Valley, John Toth, Brian Bananos, our Assistant PA, our entire business office, all of our budget managers, and everybody else who contributed to the budget. It's a, it was actually done in a shorter period of time this year because of the late numbers from the governor. So, with that, move on to our student representative. Mary, do we have?
It's Akira. She's on the phone.
Okay, Akira, welcome.
Hello, my name is Akira Fonger, and I'm Student Government Board of Education liaison for this school year. Here is what is going on at Franklin High School. The class of 2025 just held a fundraiser at Hillsburg Chipotle. They will now be selling class spirit wear to benefit the class activity. Email Mr. Friedman for more information. The student government will be selling Save Around coupon books as their last fundraiser for the Emanuel Cancer Foundation. Email or see Mr. Friedman for more information. FBLA, led by Mrs. Nagorini and Ms. Venice, had a great showing at their competition this past weekend. The K-pop club will meet virtually. Check out their Google Classroom for more information. NJGPA state graduation testing is currently taking place at the high school. The neuroscience club will be holding its annual brain awareness week event from March 15 through March 17. This event will both be in person and virtually, which is open to everyone. Email Mrs. Shaw for more information. Senior shirt designs are underway with Ms. Lewis. Seniors are emailing their, their various designs. As well, Ms. Lewis will be after school selling tickets for senior events. Email her for more information. That concludes my report for Franklin High School.
Thank you very much. And now, we are on to Dr. Vavalli.
I did it again. Did I do it again?
Yeah.
Sorry. A superintendent's report, so I'm going to keep relatively short. I want to thank John and, or Mr. Toth and his department, and all the budget managers, principals, supervisors, directors, Dr. Loughran, cabinet members, you name it, lots of work went into that development of that preliminary budget, and you all did yeoman's work in a short amount of time, late nights, and I appreciate it, and, and as you heard from the board, they appreciate it as well. My COVID protocol updates. Once again, this month, there's a motion on this month's agenda to update the Road Forward Health and Safety Plan. This update speaks to lifting the universal mask mandate in our district, thus becoming a mask-optional district. As announced last month, as of March 7, the authority to maintain universal masking in a school district was shifted to local school districts. Many in Somerset County lifted their mask mandate as of March 7, while we in Franklin maintained universal, universal masking in our schools, as per my letter dated February 28th, explaining the rationale for doing so. With that said, we did recently convene the Restart Safe Return Committee earlier this week to review the latest COVID data and guidance regarding universal masking, and as a result, the committee has recommended lifting the mandate effective Monday, March 21st. The data that influenced this decision included a drastic reduction in the variables that influence local Cali score, such as the number of cases per 100,000, percent of COVID-like illness in our area, and percent of COVID-positive cases in our area, since that data was last reviewed at the last Restart Safe Return Committee. In addition, the CDC, as you probably are aware, has identified the, has identified the community level in Somerset County as low or green. Community level is a new CDC metric that is based on number of cases, number of hospitalizations, and current hospital capacities. We'll post a letter on the website tomorrow that further explains the rationale for lifting the mandate effective Monday, March 21, 2022. I do want to take this opportunity to remind everybody that other mitigation strategies remain in effect, such as social distancing, contact tracing, quarantining, and of course, we have some folks who have to test, and staff members, that is, and then we have a fairly robust voluntary testing program, and just added another 150 people to that list this week. Again, please take a look at our website for a letter that'll post tomorrow from me explaining the change and more detail on the rationale for it. I believe it's A-12 board members, and originally, there was a mistype. It said March 7 in the exhibit that, you know, universal masking would be lifted effective March 7. It's since then been corrected. Thank you, Mrs. Clark, for getting on the internet and correcting it. So, now, it does say March 21, which is Monday. And that's all we have. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, to the board president's report. Please join me in a moment of silence for Stephen Manetti, the husband of Lisa Manetti, a paraprofessional at Claremont. Mr. Manetti had previously been, been employed as a paraprofessional in the district, and our hearts and prayers go out to the family. Thank you. Open online registration for the 2223 school year will now begin on Monday, April 4. The date has been changed from the date previously advertised. If you know of any family who resides in Franklin Township, who is considering registering their child for the pre-K 3 or pre-K 4 programs or another grade level and is not currently enrolled, enrolled in the district, please tell them to check out our website for information. Some news from the high school. The junior ROTC team competed or composed of Cadet Rogavi Palutiga and Cadet Daniel Rodriguez Conteras, Cadet Emma Desai, and Cadet Aaron Cuddy will compete in the 2022 U.S. Army Junior ROTC Academic Bowl Championship this June in Washington, D.C. This talented team earned top scores out of the 1,942 Army Junior ROTC Cadet, Army Junior ROTC academic teams that competed from around the world. The team is only one of, only 32 Army Junior ROTC Academic Bowl teams in the nation to advance to the final competition, sponsored by the U.S. Army Cadet Command and conducted by the College Options Foundation. So, we wish our warrior junior ROTC team good luck. Congratulations to Cyprian Stewart, the first member of the aviation club to earn his private pilot's license. And some upcoming events. Finally, the Franklin High School production of Dreamgirls will take place on April 28, 29, 30, and May 1. So, check the website for more information. The Franklin High School Sisters in Training for Life will be hosting their 12th Annual Free Prom Dress Giveaway Event on Saturday, April, April 9. This year's event will take place at the Franklin Township Youth Center. They're looking for any licensed cosmetologists, makeup artists, nail technicians, eyelash techs, and/or seamstresses who'll be willing to volunteer their time and provide a brief tutorial on their specific expertise. So, if you know of anyone with those credentials who might want to help, please have them contact Stacy Hale at the Franklin High School. And that concludes my board president report. And now, we are on to comments from the public on agenda items only.
I make a motion to open for public comment.
So, second.
Motion to open public comment on agenda items only by Arteman, seconded by Dennis. All in favor? Opposed? Public comments now open. Please state your name and address, and if you are calling in, please get into the queue by pressing star five.
I'm at 1935 Old Amwell Road, and my question this evening is based on the budget that Dr. Lough, that was presented this evening. First, I want to thank everybody that was involved that was very comprehensive and informative, so thank you for that time. It does help everyone in the district, including our staff and our students. My question specifically is regarding the security. I see that in the, in the budget, we have an increase in security officer budget of 46,500. In my, I'm thinking that's not enough, and it needs to be revisited before it's finalized, and so I wanted to state that for the record. There are two things that I wanted, I wanted to address and why I'm thinking that's inefficient. One is Dr. Solomon, who is in the audience this evening, raised the concern at a parent discussion meeting that he was requesting 11 security officers at the high school. And right now, if I'm understanding, he's at eight, so I'm not too sure if the budget of 46,5 will bring him to his total that he feels is necessary at the high school. Also, want to bring your attention to a letter that was dated on February 24 of 2022 and was submitted to Mr. Wilson, who's also in the audience, from the President's Council, stating several areas of concerns in regards to security within the district and several schools and so forth. And I just feel that the, the budget is a little slow in this topic, in this area, to address the concerns that were raised. I think that as a parent of student, as well as being on a PTO and being in, you know, in, in everybody's ear, this area is an important topic, and I, and I implore you to revisit this line item before finalizing it to increase it so that there is money involved to keep our kids safe. Thank you for your time and your attention to this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If you are calling in, please press star five on agenda items only. See if no one else. I'm sure the board wants to close the session on items and things on the agenda. Motion to close public comment by Bill, seconded by
Second.
Nishida. All in favor? Opposed? I'm sorry, Lori. All in favor? Opposed? Public comment on agenda items only is now closed. Dr. Valley, would you care to address that?
Well, I'm actually going to defer to Mr. Wilson about the number of safety officers. I know that he and Dr. Solomon had a lot of conversation about safety officers and distribution of safety officers and planning and use of safety officers and posting them. I don't think eight is correct, but I could be wrong. Is it 10, Mr. Wilson?
I think he'll be out to 11, although one of those is
Our goal was to get Dr. Solomon to 11, and I think after tonight, he will be at 11, although one of those 11 is currently out on a workman's comp situation.
That's correct. So, when he returns, he'll be at the full complement of 11 that he requested for next year or as soon as this year?
This year.
And carried into next year? That's what that 46 and change is, because we were able to take two part-time people and make them full-time. I had said that as part. So, he'll get what he asked for, the good doctor. And of course, with that said, we also did some other things, revisited planning, stationing, posting, use of surveillance cameras, upgrading of the Hallow vape system. We've got restorative practices PD happening. We have a code of conduct revision on this agenda that will provide a little more authority to the principal to deal with the situations from, with a higher level at his or at the middle school level, her discretion. So, I know Mr. Wilson has, even prior to the letter,
So I know Mr. Wilson has, even prior to the letter, has been working with Dr. Solomon and two middle school principals. I mean, and not that this is by no means an excuse, but I think we all recognize, and you know, just look at the Rutgers study. We have a whole bunch of Rutgers guys here tonight. Raise your hand, Rutgers people. So all these young folks are here, and they're going to be our next group of educators, and they're here observing the board meeting. But Rutgers just did a study. And, you know, nationally, they found that violence in schools is up a third nationally. No particular socioeconomic class, no particular suburban, urban. That's statewide, I believe it was. Violence in schools is up a third as students return to the classroom full-time. And why is that? Well, they're attributing that gap to the lack of social supports the kids had and the lack of emotional supports kids had. I mean, we are a little, you know, we are a little microcosm of a community within side of our schools, and they weren't together for a long time. And we know we've got adults struggling with that, too. But now we bring, you know, 2,300 kids back together at a high school. And like a lot of other districts, we're struggling. And but we're planning. And actually, kudos to our teachers. And I think we have our association here, too. You know, we just had that conversation yesterday. We're going to get together with our Administrator Association or Teachers Association and our administrators, senior-level administrators toward May and really, really, really look at some of the things we used to address some of these behaviors this year and brainstorm together some things moving forward. Because the teachers need to be an active part of that, because they are the folks that are on the front line, and they're the ones dealing with the kinds of behaviors that we're seeing. So and that really came from the teachers. So kudos to them for bringing that up and wanting to be involved in that process. And I look forward to that collaboration in May. So, you know, it's not always the number of people, but sometimes it's how well you use the people that you have and what kind of plans you have in place, what kind of training you have in place, where you put those people. Sometimes more isn't necessarily better. And not to say that we didn't need more, because Dr. Solomon was clear and in our planning was able to demonstrate that need. So and if we have future needs, even though it may not be reflected in that $46,500, that doesn't mean that there won't be opportunities in the future if we should identify needs. But again, more doesn't always necessarily. If that were the case, then, you know, every school would be out there right now just hiring, hiring, hiring and trying to make the problem go away. But that's not what everybody is doing. We're bringing more programs into the school to help support the kids at the levels they need, which is another reason for that Panorama software, because that helps us to target exactly the needs that the kids have. So thank you, Mr. Wilson. And yes, thank you, Dr. Solomon, for your work. But that was a little bit inaccurate. I just wanted to correct it because the number is higher than what you reported. And it will be 11 once we get our person back from injury.
So we are on to the Committee Liaison Reports. And to piggyback on that, Bill, why don't you read the Safety and Security Report?
Okay. So the Safety and Security Committee Report ties right into this discussion we're just having. At our meeting at March 9th, 7:15, myself as chair, Nishida Desai, Dr. Dennis Hopkins, Ms. Milanczyk, the court ex officio, Mr. Wilson and Dr. Ravalley were in attendance on a Zoom meeting. The first item, around student code of conduct revision. It was recommended that the committee review a recommended addendum to the 21-22 District Code of Conduct. The recommendation would further clarify student acts of physical aggression and would provide an opportunity for administrators at the secondary level to work together with students, their parents, guardians, and our local police department to engage students in restorative practices such as community service, conflict resolution support, and help students gain a deeper understanding of the importance of resolving conflict without resorting to physical aggression. This recommendation is included in tonight's board agenda. Now, items for review and discussion. The district's safety updates. Safety officers. At Franklin High School, currently has eight officers assigned to an eight-hour shift covering the time between 6:30 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. There is also an officer who covers the events lobby between the hours of 5:00 and 9:00 p.m. An additional officer will be added to the regular school hours once they have completed the onboarding process. Next, SGS Campus currently has four full-time officers and one officer covering the building between the hours of 5:00 and 9:00 p.m. Hamilton Campus currently has four full-time officers, one full-time officer from 11:00 to 7:30 p.m. and one officer from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. Substitute officers. The supervisor of security continues to advertise for substitutes. However, pool of candidates is small. The Office of School Management continues to work with human resources to increase advertising in an attempt to increase the pool of applicants. Student discipline at the secondary level. Incidents of student suspension and physical aggression, CDS, vaping, HIV were discussed. And then Dr. Ravalley just referred to some of the committee that reflected in the letter that came from the PTO President's Council on February 25th, expressing security concerns at the secondary level. Mr. Wilson described to the committee, my committee, the measures in place to address the concerns expressed in the letter and to ensure the safety of our students and staff. And for the purpose of the minutes, I'll read them. They include, but are not limited to, revision regarding the acts of physical aggression with the possibility of referral to the Franklin Township Police Department. Recalibration, in-person meetings with students at the secondary schools. Increased number of security officers at Franklin High School. Increased staff hall presence at Franklin Middle School, Hamilton Street, and Sampson during the school passing times. Establish a staff-school culture committee at each of the campuses that meets monthly to identify and remediate building-level concerns. Establish monthly parent check-in meetings at the middle schools and Franklin High School to gain input and support for ongoing initiatives to address behavioral data. Student education on health issues of vaping, drugs, and alcohol, and use of social media. And we adjourn that meeting approximately 9:00 p.m.
Thank you. Nishida, would you do communications, please? You want communications? Hold on one second.
The communications meeting was held on March 7th. Present were myself, Ms. Lori Maris, Arteman Singh, Dr. Ravalley, and Mary Clark. The meeting began at 7:30 p.m. The committee discussed recent changes in the district's masking protocol and the CDC's most recent guidance. The district's Safe Return Committee will be meeting on March 15th to discuss how this guidance may further influence the district's masking protocol. The committee was briefed on a COVID-19 testing opportunity for students and staff members. The registration process for weekly saliva testing by the Marismas Company was reopened recently. It is expected that those who signed up recently will begin testing during the week of March 14th, 2022. The most recent report of number of positive COVID-19 cases in the district was shared with the committee. The committee discussed articles which will appear in the next issue of the Franklin Times Township Newsletter and ideas for upcoming issues. The committee was able to view the new template for the district website and some of its features, including video streaming and a high-contrast feature for viewers with visual impairments. The meeting ended at 8:15 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori, would you do communication or, I'm sorry, curriculum?
Sure. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met Monday, March 7th, at 6:00 p.m. via Zoom. In attendance were myself, Lori Maris, Ms. Nishida Desai, Mr. Sammy Shabon. Also in attendance, Dr. Danielle Longren and Dr. John Ravalley. In the area of new business, the committee approved the LEED, which stands for Law Enforcement Against Drugs and Violence Program. This curriculum will be delivered in Grade 6 health classes beginning in the 2022-2023 school year. Middle school television production elective courses for grades 6 through 8. These semester-long electives will provide students with a strong foundation in essential skills and knowledge about television and film production. We also approved the Physical Systems Course Proposal. This course will provide a science survey experience for students in the Autism, CI, LLD, and Resource Special Education sections in Grade 9. Also approved was a Rutgers University Anti-Racism Pilot Unit of Study for ESL Curricula in Grade 3, beginning in the 2021-2022 school year. This interdisciplinary unit of study enables students to engage in civics lessons surrounding anti-racism and advocacy. Finally, a $2,500 grant application from the Foundation for Health Advancement. If this is awarded, the grant will support our Health Professions Academy in purchasing mock suture supplies. The committee ended their meeting at approximately 7:00 p.m.
Thank you, Lori. Sammy, would you read policy, please?
Sure. The Policy Committee met on March 7th, 2022. In attendance were myself, Ms. Lori Maris, Ms. Nishida Desai, Dr. John Ravalley, and Ms. Mary Clark. We began at 7:05. The committee reviewed and discussed a revision to Bylaw 0145, Board Member Resignation and Removal. The revision clarifies that if a board member misses three consecutive board meetings, whether those meetings are regular business meetings or other types of board meetings without good cause, he or she can be removed. The process for removal includes notice to the board member that his or her removal is being considered at the next board meeting. The committee reviewed and discussed a revision to Policy and Regulation 5330.01, Administration of Medical Cannabis. This was formerly the Medical Marijuana Policy, and the revisions include a change of terminology from marijuana to cannabis and also details on the registration process for those administering medical cannabis and the inclusion of the term designated caregiver. Finally, the committee reviewed and discussed a revision to Regulation 1642, the Earn Sick Leave, which added language about the use of Earn Sick Leave during a state of emergency declared by the governor. Our meeting ended at 7:25 p.m.
Thank you. Mike, would you do facilities, please?
Sure. So the Facilities, Technology, Transportation, and Committee met on Tuesday, March 15th, at 6:00 p.m. via a remote. In present were President La Court, myself as chair, Dr. Hopkins, Mr. Jackson, Dr. Ravalley, Mr. Toth, Mr. Banano, Ms. Betchy, Mr. Coretta, Ryan Ellis, Mark McNamara, and Mr. Rob Torella from PSENG. We talked about energy in the district, and the committee discussed the new Energy Saver Program, which you saw a little bit earlier today, which is being offered by PSENG. The program will allow the district to upgrade all the lighting as well as replace any old mechanical equipment such as HVAC boilers at qualified schools. This isn't LED, very efficient, equipment. PSENG will pay for 100% of the upfront cost to perform the work. And when the job is complete, the district repays only 30% of the total project costs through savings on the monthly bill. Ryan Ellis provided the committee with an updated status report on the Claremont Solar Array. And although these numbers aren't in the report for everyone here, to date, it's about $30,000 that those solar panels on Claremont have generated and were predicted to be about $80,000 on a year. The committee also discussed capital projects that are to be included in the fiscal year 2023 budget that we saw today. Our meeting adjourned at 7:05.
Thank you. Walter, would you do the Finance Committee, please?
Yeah, sure. The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, March 15th, at 7:10 p.m. remotely. In attendance was Nancy La Court, president, myself as chair, Dr. Dennis Hopkins, Dr. Michael Smith, Dr. John Ravalley, John Toth, Ms. Jackie Betchy, and Brian Banano. Financials and contracts. The committee reviewed the bill's list for the month of March and the Board Secretaries' Report, Transfer Report, Bank Reconciliation, and Void Check Report for the prior month. The committee discussed an addendum and renewal for the Montauk Transportation Contract. Physical Year 2023 Budget. Dr. Ravalley and Mr. Toth presented the Physical Year 2023 Budget to the committee, which you guys also saw tonight. The committee discussed the Physical Year 2023 Budget and the budget challenges. Charter School. The Physical Year 2023 NJ DOE Projected Charter School Allocation is $20,455,263. This is $1.6 million higher than the current year's budget, or 8.5%. The district paid $1,659.67 in charter school tuitions and transportation for the month of March. This brings the total charter school cost to $16,163,353 for the year to date. The meeting ended at 8:35 p.m.
Thank you. Arteman, would you do Personnel, please?
Sure. The Personnel and Negotiations Committee met on Wednesday, March 9th. The meeting began at 6:09 p.m. In attendance were myself as chair, Walter Jackson, Sammy Shabon, Nancy La Court, Dr. Ravalley, Brian Banano, and Jackie Schneider. The committee reviewed and discussed the following items. Personnel Report, March 17, 2022, Number 9. The committee reviewed and discussed the Personnel Report, March 17, 2022. Appointments include paraprofessional and food service workers, home instructions, literacy and math, family engagement nights, parent academy planning, and support workshops, NJSLA prep and restorative practice training. Mr. Banano reviewed the process for the discussion of the FTSSA negotiations timeline. There was nothing to discuss for the good of the order. The meeting ended at 7:01 p.m.
Thank you. And now we're on to the new business section.
I would like to make a motion to move the following. R1 Monthly Reports, M1 Minutes of Board Meetings, A1 Adoption of 2022-2023 Preliminary Budget, A2 Travel and Related Expense Reimbursement, A3 Affirm Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Decisions, A4 National Alcohol Awareness Month, A5 Establish Summer Schedule for 2022, A6 Use of District Facilities, A7 Revised Policies, Second Reading and Adoption, A8 New Policy, Second Reading and Adoption, A9 Revised Regulation, Reading and Adoption, A10 Revised Bylaw, First Reading, A11 Revised Policy, First Reading, A12 COVID Protocol Update, A13 Code of Conduct Revision, A14 New Jersey School of Conservation Resolution, B1 Warrants and Payrolls, B2 Financial Reports, B3 Contract Approvals, A through K, B4 Change Orders, no change orders at this time, B5 Award of RFP for Itinerant Teaching Services, B6 Award of RFP for Nursing Services, One-to-One and Substitutes, B7 Award of RFP for Occupational Therapy Services, B8 Award of RFP for Physical Therapy Services, B9 Purchasing Manual, B10 Authorize the Use of Competitive Contracting, B11 Electric and Natural Gas Supply, B12 Transportation Contracts, C1 Out-of-District Students, School Year 2021-2022, C2 Field Trip Destinations, no destinations at this time, C3 Field Trip Applications, no trips to approve at this time, C4 Motion to Approve Course Proposals, C5 Grand Submission, C6 Pilot at this time, C4 Motion to Approve Course Proposals, C5 Grand Submission, C6 Pilot Unit of Study, C7 Lead Program, and P1 Personnel Report Number Nine, dated March 17, 2022.
So, the motion is for R1, M1, A1 through A14, B1 through B12, C1 through C7, and P1. Can I get a second?
A second.
Second.
Nishida. Second. And is there any comments, any discussion? Bill, I'm going to start with you.
I'm sorry. Yeah. I just want to make note of item A14, the New Jersey School of Conservation. For those of us who've been in Franklin Township for a while, that's known as the Stokes Program. And I would say that it brings back some very, very happy memories for maybe people in this room, but certainly for thousands of students over the years. And it's really good to see that the state is joining with Rutgers and other agencies to keep that program alive, to learn about the environment, give kids an experience. It was a great part of Franklin's history. For the kids that went to Sampson, our children went from that building to Stokes. And for my kids, I remember what a wonderful experience it was. Nancy, I'm sure you can recall that also?
Yes. Stokes is wonderful.
So, just wanted to note that in my comments before I vote.
Thank you. Mike, do you have any questions, comments?
Nope.
Lori?
No comments. Thank you.
Sammy?
No.
Dennis?
No.
Nishida?
No.
Walter?
No.
Arteman?
No questions.
Okay. John, can you do roll call, please?
Ms. Desai?
Yes.
Mr. Grippo?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Mr. Shabon?
Yes.
Ms. Singh?
Yes.
Supervisor's here.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Motion carries. And now we would like to welcome our new supervisor of world languages, Armando Quirros. Would you like to just come up and say a couple of words?
Good evening. I'm Armando Quirros. I'd like to thank the board for your consideration in appointing me to supervisor of world languages. Throughout my career, I've dedicated myself to second language learning, to language acquisition, and to furthering proficiency for all students. So, I'm very excited for what's in store for the Franklin World Language Program. I'm humbled and very grateful for your confidence and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
President LaCourte, may I?
Of course.
Not to embarrass Armando, but there were other interested parties in Armando, and not only is he a world language teacher, but he chose us. So, thank you for choosing us over those other interested parties. We're excited to have you. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, because I mentioned, I gave Rutgers a shout out, but I see we have a lot of Boy Scouts, correct? Yep, Boy Scouts in the audience, and they must be here doing some community service. So, welcome. I love the baseball hat, by the way, that big Franklin on it. So, welcome to the Boy Scouts, and I hope you got your community service tonight.
Thank you, and thank you for picking Franklin. Wise choice. So, now we're on to comments from the public on any topic. Five minutes per speaker. Please state your name and address. Can I get a motion to open public comment, any topic?
Motion.
Seconded.
Moved by Nishida, seconded by Dennis. All in favor? Opposed? Public comments now open on any topic. Please state your name and address if you're calling in, star five.
My name is Stanley St. Louis. I reside at 26 Wyckoff Place in Franklin Park, New Jersey. And what I wanted to address to the board or bring up, I was fortunate enough this season to be a coach in the Franklin Heat Travel Program within the district. And great program, great opportunity to work with the kids and watch them develop over the course of the season. And as a result of that, I was able to identify some gaps that I think we have an opportunity here as a community to continue to invest and put into these kids, especially the ones that find an interest in basketball and want to continue their own development. So, the purpose of me coming here tonight, we just wrapped up the season a couple of weeks ago, and right now, there is a period between the season ending and then us moving into summer league programs. However, one of the things that I've noticed in kind of speaking to some of the other coaches this season in the neighboring towns are some of the efforts they're putting behind the kids to continue their own individual development skills. And that is an area of opportunity that I think we can, that I'm asking for assistance for, especially around the facilities. A lot of the kids, they want to continue their development, they want to continue their practice, but having access to facilities where that can be done, especially during the winter months where the weather hasn't quite changed yet, and we don't have the opportunity to get them outside. So, that's something that I've wanted to bring or surface to the forefront. I mean, we have a lot of dedicated parents that are willing to volunteer and assist in the program, but we also need some assistance in making sure that we have a space or an area where we can continue to help these kids develop their skills. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on any topic? Motion to close public comment made by Bill, seconded by?
Second.
Lori? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment is now closed. John, would you like to address that, please?
Sure. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, sir.
Stanley.
Say it again?
Stanley.
Stanley. Stanley, we do have a policy that allows for the use of facilities. It happens to be called our Use of Facilities Policy. And as long as you have insurance and you're an AAU group, which you probably are, it sounds like, all you need to do is talk to Mr. Margolin, he's our athletic director. Dr. Solomon's never going to come to one of these meetings again, even though I complimented him. But Dr. Solomon, who's principal of the high school, and our two middle school principals, those are typically the schools we use. We do have a couple others available, however, but you just need to find time. Now, I will be honest with you, dead of winter is tough. Now is okay because our seasons are through, and you know, we're starting to move outside now with the sports that we play in the spring, and spring for us starts in March. So, this time of year is optimum to get space. It's the other time of year, you know, that November to March, that's really tough, and that's because, you know, we have quite a robust program ourselves, and we utilize a lot of the spaces. But hey, we're all for getting kids involved in sports, there's no question about that. I don't think anybody on the board here would give you any backlash about that. And again, there's already a process in place. So, all you have to do is ask, we'll find you a spot.
Dr. Ravalli, one question to Stanley. Have you reached out to, maybe one of the board members could help me out with that new building just was built?
Direct.
Yes, because they begging to have that building utilized and maybe coordinating with those folks to, because I went over there to visit, and those folks are eager to put bodies in that building. I would recommend seeking out to them and try to help coordinate utilization of that nice, brand-new building.
So, if I may, Madam President, can I? Thank you so much. So, I'd like to first commend Mr. Stanley and actually the whole Heat Program. My son was on that team, and they did fabulous. They were ranked seventh in Central Jersey. I will note that we were the only team to not have a home game. Every other town found a way to have court time for their home teams, and we didn't. So, while it's great that we can avail ourselves of the community center, I think that the town needs to really step behind people like Mr. Stanley. I think it's a broader thing. We discussed earlier the safety concerns that we have, and part of that stems from the lack of that social engagement, giving alternatives, getting the kids together. And I think part of the overall picture of Franklin is getting the kids to be positively motivated into certain things. And I think as a Board of Education, we need to support people like Mr. Stanley and like the folks around that are willing to put their time but are getting a little bit of pushback in terms of the facilities. Hopefully, you know, that'll be cleared out. We have some great athletes in Franklin, and what the trend has been is that they get to a certain level, and then a lot of them leave. And what we want to do is keep them in-house. And I think by doing programs like this, there's other towns, I mean, I'll mention like Marlboro as an example, they actually pay their coaches from those younger ages. And then you have, in the high school, they're about half the size of our district, but yet they're in the finals of the states, right? So, you see that yield, and that yields pride, it also gets those kids engaged. So, I would highly recommend to us as a Board of Education to really invest, you know, have people like Mr. Stanley come to us, but also for us to initiate some of these engagements, especially when it comes to athletics, and not just with basketball, but with football and other things. But I think this is something bigger than just a particular program at a particular time. So, that's what I'd like to interject. Thank you so much. And I'd like to commend you, Mr. Stanley, for a job well done, and all of the coaches that volunteer their time to help with the kids of our township. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, with that, we're now on to good of the order. So, Sammy, do you have anything for the good of the order, other than that?
Yeah, no, I think that that wraps up most of my thoughts. I, you know, I do want to hear a little bit more, you know, or see a little bit more or hear more from Mr. Grippo around the safety, because some of the parents have come to me discussing, especially at Sampson, G. Smith, and sort of the higher rates of what seems to be, and I know Dr. Ravalli touched on this earlier, that nationally, there's a trend, but you know, just as a board, I would just look a little bit closer into that aspect and what we can do in terms of that. That's just what I'd like to say about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Lori, do you have anything?
Not this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
I just want to say to everybody in the town and all, to all the students, teachers, and folks who've stuck with it, wearing the masks for all these years, years, I think it's years now, good job. And hopefully, you know, this virus is not going to come back next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, do you have anything?
I agree with what he just said 110%.
That was it, Bill? You had nothing else? Dennis, do you have anything?
Just with the mask in itself, hopefully, we in Hennu, we are progressing hopefully to some type of sense of normacy. And the weather is getting warm, and the sun is energizing folks, so hopefully, come Monday, we could, those who choose to wear a mask, we will respect those, and who choose not to, we will respect those too. But hopefully, we could get to a day that we get to some sense of normacy.
Thank you. Nishida?
No, thank you.
Walter?
Yeah, just a quick quote. Congratulations, Armando. Welcome. I know you're going to be doing some great things, so congratulations. Not all storms come to disrupt your life, some come to clear your path. That's it.
That's pretty good.
I also want to just echo my congratulations to our new supervisor, and that's all for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for volunteering, and thank you to all of our volunteer coaches, and we have amazing programs that our kids continue to excel in, especially in our athletic programs. And with the safety, I'm sure that Bill will put that on his committee for Mr. Wilson to look more into, okay? And with that, have a very wonderful evening, and we will see you next month. And masking, masks go off if you choose on Monday, if you choose not to, that's fine. So, with that, be safe, be healthy, and meeting adjourned.